Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We'll call for the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee. Ray of Roll Call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Standing present.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do you have any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda?
I make the motion to add item A, proclamation recognizing Moses Wheeler for final action and working at number C in new business.
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Few days ago, I had the opportunity in the Port Huron Township invite to Moses Wheeler, which, I gotta admit, I was pretty impressed. I went out, he had a lot of people from locals, a lot of people from out of state that came in to make sure they were there, they had a nice celebration for him because of his 100th birthday. And I had an opportunity to sit that day with him, I also went back a couple days ago and sat again with him and went through some discussions with him on his past. And him and I talked tonight with the idea down the road, I got some thoughts. He's got, in fact, if I ever get that old, I sure wish my head was on as tight as his is. He's one sharp individual. In fact, I thought about giving up a couple seats here tonight to let him come up and take over for some of us. He's that sharp. He's got it together, he knows the past is just remarkable. And what we're gonna do tonight, we have a proclamation that St. Clair County's gonna do, Port Huron Township did one for him, which I was very impressed with that and, as I said, what went on that day. Tonight, Moses, can you come up, please? You wanna, you can come up here if you would. You all right? Okay. I knew you could because when I told him to make sure he was here on time, he was early. Okay, this is a proclamation recognizes Moses Wheeler in celebration of his 100th birthday. Whereas Moses Wheeler was born 100 years ago on August 31st, 1913, in Harriman, Tennessee, whereas Moses worked in many jobs throughout the years, including a cowboy, herding cows in Tennessee, a hobo, a water boy, and then laying double track for the railroad from Cincinnati to Chattanooga earning $2.90 a day. And whereas his father taught him to work on cars and nicknamed him Junebug. And whereas Moses conquered many obstacles to become a truck driver, and whereas Moses moved to St. Clair County in 1958, became an antenna TV repairman, and later bought property to run a junkyard at Port Huron Township. Whereas Moses currently spends his time buying and selling antiques as well as fixing things, and whereas the community enjoys a multitude of stories as a result of his many life experiences, including his belief that his faith is a secret to his longevity. Now therefore be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners hereby join the community in celebrating the life and experiences on the 100th birthday of Moses Wheeler. Proclaimed this 5th day of September 2013, signed by Jeff Bohm, Chairman, Steve Samasco, Vice Chairman, Carl Tomian, Commissioner, Howard Heideman, Commissioner, Dave Rushing, Commissioner, Bill Greitath, Commissioner, and Tom Riley, Commissioner. Moses, I can't tell you how proud I am to have the opportunity to give this to you, number one, and the opportunity for the conversations that I had with you the other day. It's just been a, it's an honor to have someone at your age that has so much together. And I don't say that against people that are 100 that don't have it together. But, but I certainly do think that you are somebody special, and this board feels the same way. Okay? Thank you. You're welcome to say something if you would.
Well, the only thing I can say-
Step right up there and-
I can say that I am just as much surprised as you are to have the opportunity to see that I'm loved by somebody. I've had lots of ups and downs in my life, seen lots of crime, lots of, lots of mistreatments for people, and I've been, I've been to a lot of sickness, been give up to die twice, and was diagnosed for leukemia in 1953. I still got the same symptoms I had in 1953, and ain't never had a pain from it. I can't remember ever having a headache, but I remember having a toothache. It was like a kill. And I'm so happy, happy to be in, in the presence of you people that made my 100th birthday so, so joyous. And I was so, so excited over my birthday, I mean, my birthday party in the county, I had to cry. Now, I cry a lot, but I cry for joy. Because since I found the Lord, it seems like I'm just, I'm a new person. And I'm faithful to the Lord. And if you are born again Christian, you have to live it, you can't talk it. And I appreciate everything that this congregation has done for me. And I don't know any of you people that's making this possible, but I thank you all. And I, I, I hope to see, see somebody else come up behind me doing the same thing, but I'm one happy man.
I gotta tell you, I gotta tell you one thing that he told me the other day I thought was really special, and this will set well with one of our commissioners. We were talking about his past and how he worked with the railroad. And Dave, I want you to just relax for a minute. When Dave Rushing told me a week ago, walking down the river, going through the parks, how much the rail weighed per foot, I remember, you know, I commented there and I thought that's pretty impressive. This gentleman come up with it the other day and just conversation told me how much it was for the trains back then, and how much it was for the dump, the ones that are pulling all the big ones. So immediately I thought of Dave because when you mention railroads, Dave gets very happy. So that's the second guy in.
Yeah?
Now, don't try and leave before he gets to you because he'll talk to you all night.
Well, that's all right, I'll talk to him too.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think-
Even drove here too, correct?
Huh?
Drove himself here, correct?
Yep, sorry.
Yeah, drove himself.
He drove himself here?
No?
Oh yeah.
It's pretty awesome.
I see, right.
Drive a Western?
That would be interesting.
Is that right?
Oh yeah. Go from here to San Fernando. Cali to San Fernando.
I'm surprised you don't write the brands.
I got my, I got my driver's license, my driver's license took at 100, at 100 years old.
Did you?
Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful.
They expire 2017.
2017?
That's what, that's what it says.
Call us, we'll take you down and give it.
I've already got them in my pocket.
Okay. Next, any citizens to be heard for this Human Services Committee? Up Gary, updates? Sub show initiatives?
Nothing.
Okay. Under, excuse me, old business? Under new business, item A, Resolution 1319, endorsement of St. Clair County Health Department Strategy Plan.
Moses, we talk about a lot of stuff that I don't know if you're interested, you're more than welcome to hang around, but if you wanna get up and walk out too, we won't be offended, so.
I got nothing to do.
Okay.
Gentlemen?
Good evening.
Good evening, hi. As indicated in your package, this is the St. Clair County Health Department's first strategic plan with the support of Metropolitan Planning Committee. I believe we have a good vetted product here. It includes a wide variety of stakeholder analysis, employee analysis, and it is intended as a guiding document for the next three to five years. I wanna mention that the goals and objectives are not indicated as final outcome products. For instance, our initial priority will obviously be financial stability and development of our workforce to respond to the changing healthcare environment. Things such as a new health department, although have been a recurring theme and have risen to the top of all of our, our stakeholder analysis, should remain on our, on our agenda, but will not receive our highest priorities at this time. So if that's causing you any concerns, I wanna just reassure you that, and on page 20, you will see that strategic plans will be reviewed annually, including reassessing and reprioritizing the goals and objectives. So this is a working document, a living document, that's meant to guide our prioritization. And we are looking for your endorsement, our Board of Health has endorsed it, and I think it's of great value that you recognize where we're focusing our attention over the next several years.
I'd make the motion. Support?
Move and support it, discussion?
I just got a few, and probably Gary Fletcher also. And I could've picked through this, but I see on, there's a couple issues here. One, you're bringing up about a new building.
Mm-hmm.
If we endorse this, are we endorsing a new building?
You're endorsing the concept that a new building isn't desirable. And it goes so far as that.
I don't wanna commit the county to, yeah, we support-
And I think everyone would agree with that, if you've been to our building, you recognize the issue.
And I just picked out a few things. On objective one, under your objectives to treat these actions and various things, you got management should select five to seven employees at random each month for an informal meeting to discuss ideas, issues, and reason. I'm sure that's gonna be revised because I don't know how you can get a consistency if you keep getting five to seven different employees every month.
And part of that issue is to continue to improve the dialogue between administration and staff. People that working, are working on the ground floor directly with programs and with clients often have a very unique perspective of issues and problems related to it. So I actually do think that's of value, and we will try and implement some kind of rotating schedule to do such things.
I'm not sure how many total employees, and this was already reported-
We have, we have close to 80 employees.
I see you have morale and how the management reflects their-
Correct.
That's about the worst things you have, 80% morale.
Yeah. And you'll see that the vast majority of our staff like working for the Health Department and feel that the priority of care to the client is a higher priority than, than other issues. I think some of the survey also reflects the high quality of staff we have. We just need to improve on our communication. And it's been very challenging for them. Since I started, there has been consistent changes in budget reductions and reductions of staff. And I think we can do a better job with that kind of change management as well.
I just have one more thing. Under your policies and plans, domain 5, 5.3, you got develop and implement a Health Department organizational strategic plan. We don't have one already?
That's what this is.
Well, I mean, prior to this though-
Prior to this, we did not have a strategic plan.
And I guess the only other question, Gary, is there anything in here that potentially hold this, the county liable? Any wording in here that we need to be concerned about?
No. I looked it over, it's a strategic plan, so it's a, it isn't committing the board to anything other than supporting, endorsing their plan to improve the department.
Okay, 'cause there's quite a bit in there.
Yeah.
And I wanna make sure the wording's correct.
Yes. I'm good with it.
Mr. Driver? One of the things that, that I like, and you just mentioned it, that you're going to revisit this yearly.
Correct. At least.
And if, if what I'm reading about the rollout of Obamacare, you mentioned already lots of changes in public health, and I think in the next year or two, we're gonna see even more, so. It may be a year or two before the dust settles and we actually find out where we are with the future of healthcare in America.
You're very optimistic, Howard.
Including public health. And then we can talk about the building, but we know where we are.
Correct. We have a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
And I might mention that it's very difficult to design and plan a building if you don't really have a full understanding of your ultimate roles in this new system.
Yes.
Dr. Mark Penn, I, under the organizational culture and employee morale, Commissioner Rushing was talking about that, and in terms of the morale piece, you know, in your plan, there's more engagement with the employees. I think that's kind of addressed in your plan. But what about the, the finding or the survey result that over two-thirds of the employees feel that poor performance is not effectively dealt with by management? I didn't really see something in here that-
It actually does talk about a more consistent employee evaluation system.
Yes, I did see that.
Correct. And I think that is really the response to that. We've been relatively lax over the years with that, and we have instituted an annual review evaluation process that's being held to very firmly with face-to-face reviews, and we'll be sticking to that on a calendar basis.
I, I personally have been involved in those kinds of systems, and I think that's a great response, but I wanna emphasize, my personal opinion is that when you, when you take on that responsibility, it's gonna be very important that those evaluations be done on a regular basis, on a timely basis. Because if you're trying to address the organizational culture and morale, but then the evaluations of the individual people get postponed for whatever reasons, then it really looks like that you don't care. And I've run into that problem in my career, and I just wanted to share that with you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and we've actually found, we've had to really crack the whip to get these evaluations done. We've already run into that, yeah.
And it's a, it's a, it's a problem that all organizations have, that you've got the services you're trying to deliver to your citizens, and, but someone wants you to meet with employees and talk to them, there is definitely a conflict there. With good planning, I think it can be accomplished, and I think, I think it's something that's very necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, item B, proclamation, healthy minds, healthy bodies, stay in-
I move that, this is for final action, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So I would, I would move that we give final action to this proclamation this evening.
Second?
Move and support it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, other human services matters? Next, under information-only, Health Department point of interest?
Move that we receive and file packets.
Support.
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, other human services matters? Next, under information-only, Health Department point of interest?
Move that we receive and file packets.
Support.
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, take a motion for the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee? Seeing none, no conceptual initiatives, I take it. And there is no old business, we're under new business. A, letter of agreement with Community Mental Health for psychiatric services. Gary is here to answer any questions that gentlemen may have. Gary, do you wanna say something first, or do you have some questions?
This is just an agreement for our psychiatric services, prior to, or for our new program and the expanded day treatment program. Prior to this, we had a contract with Dr. John Sarkar in the residential treatment program. We are now going to, or we want to contract with Community Mental Health and Dr. Baugh. A couple reasons for that is we've been contracting with Community Mental Health in our old day treatment program for many years, and they've given us an excellent deal on our therapist and actually the psychiatric services. Part of that was a throw-in by CMH for us. If we had a student that needed psychiatric services, the therapist would line that up with Dr. Baugh and they would take care of it. The other thing I wanna mention is Dr. Baugh is a child psychiatrist. When we originally hired Dr. Sarkar back in 2006, I believe, Dr. Baugh was not available. Since that time, CMH has added a second child psychiatrist, which has freed up Dr. Baugh's time, so it's attractive for us from the standpoint that we would have a child psychiatrist that we can refer our kids to.
Any questions for Gary? Dave?
What's the comparison to cost from last year to this year, under new agreement?
It's gonna be probably a tad more, and I'm thinking like under $5,000 more, so it's kind of a wash. And I don't know that we'll even hit the, the maximum.
I'd make a motion to have this matter referred onto the full board meeting.
Second?
I have a motion and a support to move it onto the full board. Any other discussion, any other questions for Gary? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Gary, thank you very much for your time. 7B, fiscal year 2014, Michigan Mental Health Code Grant Program application and proposed budget.
Move that it goes to the full board.
Support. I have a motion and a support to move it onto the full board. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7C, 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. I believe that's in the amount of $12,436. There is no match, this is all federal funds, and it will be going to the sheriff.
I would move the 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Award.
That go to the full board, right?
Yes.
To the full board.
I have a motion and support to send it on to the full board. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other judiciary or public safety matters to come to the board tonight? Mr. Kaufman?
I just wanna alert the board that normally this would've been on the agenda for this evening. The grant application is not ready to present to you yet, but we will be coming to you at the full board meeting, board meeting, asking for action on a grant application to support the secondary road patrol program. It's a program we've had here for many, many years. Many of you are very familiar with it, but that will be on the agenda for final action for the full board in two weeks.
Okay. Any chance we could get a copy of that before?
As soon as it's, certainly we can do that.
All right, good. I think that's what Commissioner Rushing wanted. Okay, very good, thank you. Any other judiciary or public safety matters? No information, receive and file?
I move we receive and file packets regarding judicial and public safety committee matters. Support.
Move and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open for adjournment, gentlemen.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Here. Any additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion carried, thank you. Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners regarding environmental, public works?
Commissioner Bohm?
I've got one, Howard, it's actually regarding the airport, it's a couple things. I gave you guys a series of pictures. The first one is the hangar, the other one is something else I wanna talk about at later date. That's the facility that we got back at the airport. It's now in county possession. Howard and I went and took a tour of it, and there's the picture just of the building, which it, that's currently probably four or five doors to the, so I guess, south or north, or further up the road, I guess, from our, from our existing blue hangar. It's got some heat, it's rough, a couple little issues gotta be fixed up, but what we're gonna be proposing to do with this building is that's where a lot of the hazmat stuff is going to be located at. There's a lot of equipment that's currently housed in our big blue hangar. The thought is, which really, a lot of it only needs cold storage, a couple articles need heated storage, but what that'll give us- cold storage. Couple articles need heated storage, but what that'll give us, the opportunity is we'll be able to park a lot of that stuff in this building here. Then we'll open up the big blue hangar, which is high-end heated storage. I think with our new FBO, I've got some numbers just as, for example, on our fueling, in 2012, we pumped 8,800 gallons of gas. Previous FBO, 2013, the numbers for August was 10,200. So we had a 16% increase in fuel just in that month from year-to-date, or from 2002 to 2013. Also, our new FBO is collecting landing fees. We previously did not collect landing fees. There was an additional $1,200 collected in landing fees out there. They did bring a new tenant onboard, so all the feedback that I'm getting so far out there, good things. And I really think once we give him the opportunity to be able to go out and solicit some of his other customers that he's had previous, that big blue hangar is going to, you know, be critical for. So I did talk to Jeffrey. Then they're working with Kathy. They're working with Ron Marsh on getting this building, just a couple other little things, so they can start moving some of the stuff out of that other facility to make that available. So Kathy is going to come next, in two weeks, to kind of give more of the full revenue and storage, you know, some of the other monies that the county's captured. She was at Lansing today, the aviation, state aviation deal, so she couldn't...
Commissioner Greitath. The 16% increase in fuel sales, would you attribute that to the new FBO, or is that an indication that the economy is picking up a little bit more?
We have a whole lot of people that are buying fuel from us that did not purchase fuel previously.
So it's probably not the economy. It's more the service that they're getting now?
Yeah, I think fresh-faced, you know.
That's a good sign.
And we did make, you know, substantial investments out there via through the homeland security thing. And I mean, I think, I really feel good about our choice as far as the FBO. And I think if you talk to the other individuals out there, that they're very happy with the service that they're receiving, you know, those types of things.
I did get a chance, I went out last week to see Jeffrey on another matter, and while I was there, I got a chance to walk through some of the areas where he's moving, you know, the present planes around. He was telling me about what he'd like to do and that. I think we made a very good choice in that individual. He's got some good ideas, but he's personable. You can get down and have a good conversation with him. We discussed ideas that he had, and he was kind of just bringing me up to speed a little bit on what he was doing. I think we're heading in the right direction with him.
Yeah, and Jeff's, they're 97% done on their building out there. They're, you know, transitioning as we speak. And so hopefully, in the next 60 to 90-day stuff, we can get, you know, the hazmat portion of it, get that space open, available, if not even sooner than that.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Jeff, I'd just like to remind you that, you know, after our meeting that we had with the friends at the airport, when that building does get complete, I think it'd be really good public relations for the county to invite that group to come in and take a tour when Jeff finishes that building up.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. Because it kind of became, and I want to say the dumping grounds for stuff, but you know, that airport hangar, there was a lot of things that ended up getting housed there, non-perhaps aviation-related. So having this additional building along with the blue storage will be able to open that up. And that high-end heated storage, those are, you know, I won't say those are the customers you want, because you want all customers, but those are your heavy-fuel users. Those are your, you know, your big rent payers, those types of things. So having, quite frankly, we don't have that space available right now out there. So to go out and actively solicit that business and don't have anywhere to put them, we'll have that opportunity now, so.
I'm very pleased to hear how quickly things are moving in a positive direction. This is great.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions regarding that? Commissioner Bohm, did you want to address this addition to?
That's, I'm going to do that. And, well, you know what, I guess we can, while we're talking about that. Let's go to our next set of pictures there. That was the, that's pictures from today. That is the industrial park in Saint Clair. As many of you know, when we were looking at large parcels before, and we identified some pieces around the county to find anything of any substantial size, proper water sewer, so on and so forth, there's not a lot, there's not a lot out there. And the county sat down with the City of Saint Clair and really through the EDA identifying some parcels at the time. That's the piece that we went in and cleared. Not only, well, the county cleared it, but step two of this was also to get a, to maintain the property. And the city of Saint Clair currently has some people out to farm property, turn the dirt, and do some land balancing. Step three, got a meeting next week with the Drain Commissioner, just to talk about a couple drain, I don't even call them issues, but a couple other little ideas, and to really get this piece development ready. Because, and Gary will attest to this more so, and he's been through it, when these companies come, they want to jam a shovel in the ground tomorrow. So this site will be ready. I know there's been talk too about large industrial pieces as part of a larger, you know, thing, but we're getting a lot of inquiries, and so hopefully.
Yeah, a couple things. I see it has rail access.
It's got rail, lots of rail.
Good observation.
But also, is this the 138,000 piece of property?
Yes, we spent 138 plus a little additional monies. And really, I think it really came to light when we were on the shortlist with one of the companies that, that this, from the time we started the process of bidding it out to them, the clearing to them and being done, was 100 days. So, you know, these turnaround on these companies, this was the company we were on the shortlist with, was, it was a 60-day, you know, from the time we go to the time we got to put the shovel in the ground. It's very hard to find. And I know people will say, I've got 100 acres here, you know, it's a farm field, so on and so forth. But when you start talking about rail, water, sewer, Edison, utilities, like I said, Gary will know, you just, we don't, we do not have very many large parcels available in the county. So this is, this is very close at that point, which it's turned to more happen. So if you drive down Range Road, you'll, from Saint Clair, and you'll see them doing work out there, and they're working on it. So I just kind of wanted to give you an update as to where that was at, because you sub so often, you might clear or do some other stuff, but you don't maintain them and that type of stuff.
Any other commissioners with updates? I just have one little one. As you know, about, what, two years ago, we acquired the lighthouse and developed it as a park, and it's been, I think, a huge success for our Park and Rec Department and for Port Huron Museum. But I noticed this little blip in the paper. Boston Lighthouse, $934,000 price tag, a new record. The 110-year-old working lighthouse near the entrance of Boston Harbor has been sold for a record price. The Boston Globe reported a $933,888 cash bid for the Grave Island Light Station. That's, I mean, I had no idea lighthouses were worth that kind of money.
And we got ours for free?
We got ours for free. By the way, ours, just for the record, is 190 years old. This is 110. So we've got them by a few years.
Does the value go up with age or down with age?
We'd have to address that to move.
From that, I would say it's going up.
It's going up. Anyway, moving on, any conceptual initiatives from administration?
No.
Old business, we'll move on to new business. The aviation fuel contract from Eastern Aviation for final action?
Make a motion?
I had spoke with, before we get, I spoke to Kathy today on this. She would like it not to be for final action in two weeks, so.
Okay, I would...
I'll make a motion and then send it on to the full board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Tomlin. Any questions?
I have quite a few, and that's why I called Jeff, and then I called Kathy, and had quite a bit. And Gary's here, so I guess I can start with page one. On number five, it says, "Term: Buyer agrees to pay for all such aviation fuels 30 days from delivery date." The reason I bring that up, because there's a default clause in here. And maybe Kerry does, or nobody's here from the airport. I'm not sure what our format is for paying the bills out there. If we ended up being 31 or 32 days, rather like a normal business, not 30 or such, would we be in default?
No, and they, unless we end up in a situation like, that where there's some serious problem, they will never call a default language.
But I'm worried about the language. You can't just say they'll never do it, but if you have language that says they can do it, I don't want, I don't want language. I want to protect the county. We have language in here that states that they can call us default.
Well, we can pay our bills within 30 days, for sure, which we checked in advance. But what I can tell you is, having spoken with them, the only reason that's in there is for serious problems they have with credit delinquencies, which will never be us.
And I think we'd need that language included in here.
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable the way it is. I really am.
The next one would be number six, and it says, "buyer becomes in default in the terms of this agreement. Buyer agrees to a late payment charge of a delinquent balance in the amount of one and a half percent per month or 18% grand sum." And then it goes on that the provider selling is prevailing party. Buyer agrees to pay a reasonable attorney fee incurred in the collection of any delinquent balance. If I'm reading this correctly, we're going to pay their attorney fees to sue us?
Well, if we're delinquent, they sue us and they prevail, we pay their legal fees. So...
Everybody has their, and I'm just giving you my perspective. Everybody has their day in court if they want it. They'd be upfront and agree to pay their attorney fees. Why don't, if they default, why isn't there a clause in there for them to pay our attorney fees?
Well, there'd be no basis for us to sue them for a delinquent account. What it says is, provided seller is the prevailing party, buyer agrees to pay a reasonable fee incurred in the collection of any delinquent balance or the enforcement of the contract. So basically, that's kind of boilerplate collection language if we don't pay our bill, which we obviously don't.
I just don't, I wouldn't want to have a contract, like my business, that I wouldn't want to approve. If it isn't good for me, I don't think it's good for the county. Why we, if you don't have a clause in here that would give them, us, the same action that they have against us. If they're in default, why wouldn't they cover our attorney fees for whatever reason?
I can add that if you want.
I just don't like it that we have to pay their attorney fees to sue us. Going down to, and I got my insurance question answered, so possibly maybe the wording here. In the event of buyer, that's on page three, be the third one down. In the event buyer is able to secure said insurance only with, is that with only though, or only with $100,000?
Or yeah, you lost me there.
It's the third page.
Right.
About the fourth one down. In the event buyer... I bet it makes a whole lot of difference, but only with $100,000. Should that be only with, or with only?
No, no, it's only with $100,000 per person supplements for bodily injury. So what that's saying is if we can't secure insurance, there was a bunch of other language in here that I had removed, that I didn't like. And essentially, this says if all we can get is 100 per person supplements for bodily injury, then they, we will not be eligible for their $50 million excess liability insurance program that they...
They've got an answer for me, so it'll be $1,000 a year for that insurance. And just above that, you have excess aviation refueling liability insurance in the amount of the $50 million, which you just made reference to, will be provided, buyer free of charge provided buyer secures and maintains said underlying insurance. Now, the said on your underlying insurance, do we need to have that specifically spelled out?
The, yeah, it is.
Might be right above that, the A section, commercial general liability insurance.
Exactly. It's buyer shall purchase and maintain the coverage, and we exceed this coverage by far.
Then I'm going down to the incentives, and there's a couple of things here. 14A, seller will provide AirNav Gold level advertising for buyer for five years. Are we going to maintain currently? Could we say, put wording in there that we maintain the current amount of advertising we currently have? I don't want to degrade what we're currently doing. I talked with Kathy today, as long as we're maintaining what we're doing. She already has certain, if they determine that, no, it's too much, I think we should maintain our current amount of advertising that we already have.
This was a request by the new FBO, and this is, and one of the reasons that he liked it is these incentives, which includes their AirNav Gold level advertising incentives that they provide, that is far greater than what we currently have. So that's why I wanted...
Well, I just, you know, it's going to be there, so it's specific to, we at least maintain what our current service is, because we already have that, and we're paying for it. Now, we're going to have Eastern Aviation pay for it, but I do want it to be consistent with what we've already been doing. And Kathy gave me a breakdown of that on the phone today. The next one would be B, seller will provide $100,000 initial aero class reward points at no cost to buyer. Kathy didn't know what that was. What is that?
That's reward points, so we can, this is, as the FBO explained it to me, they provide reward points, Shell does, that can be granted to heavy users at our airport, return customers. So that, they're just reward points, just like you get for staying at a Holiday Inn a lot of times.
I understand that, but we're a government entity. To me, this kind of looks like a kickback, and I don't like it.
No, it's not a kickback. You get reward points for spending at a gas station, at grocery stores, whatever. So basically, it's a rewards program, not from the county.
Right.
From Shell, to frequent users of Shell products at no cost to us. And so it's an incentive to try to get...
They would get reward points at anywhere they fuel up with a Shell gas.
Exactly.
That's funny, but then we specify who can use those reward points. I understand the FBO or customers that we have out there.
I think the rewards program is established by, will be by Kathy and the FBO and how they'll use it, but...
But we can determine who gets to use it. So let's say Bill Coughlin wants to use that if he has the opportunity.
Well, Bill doesn't have a flag.
I'm just saying.
Thank goodness.
No, I think this is, this is just a Shell incentive, so that we can have incentive for our, well, it's really so the FBO can have an incentive for their customers.
Any chance I can get a copy of their incentive reward program?
I'll get it.
Let's see, two more. And on 14F, it says, "three Shell logo signs. Two signs to replace existing signage and one large two-sided pole sign." And I am assuming that this will be the seller's cost, because it's under the incentive program?
Yeah, that's all their cost.
And, but I would like potentially to have Kathy or have it put to the county's approval and standards, so that whatever sign they put out there, and I'll just say, let's say it wasn't an appropriate sign that they determined they're going to put out there, it needs to be our approval. So the signs are maintained and at a quality that the county approves. If they put a sign out there that someone would take offense to, we should have the final approval. You can use whatever imagination you have, what kind of sign they might put out there. And I just don't want to have a bad...
It does come, that's stuff, that's like a McDonald's thing.
I know.
I'm just saying, when you...
That's the shape of a shell.
Yeah.
Right.
It's good stuff.
And that is quality stuff.
It is, it is.
But I just want like maybe a little wording to where it has county's approval.
I did some research on these guys before I tried to get this thing finalized with them, and they're one of the lead, well, Shell is one of, if not the, leading supplier of jet fuel and aviation fuel in the United States, and this is their biggest dealer in the US. Everything they provide is quality. They got airports all over the place, and it'll attract more business. So they don't, the signs are nice signs, but I'll put that in subject to.
We're here to protect the county, and this is a contract, so we can fix the contract from the get-go. Then the last one, and Kathy didn't know what this was either. Under 14H, "one year for sure delete link at no cost." Now, if that's one year, what's the cost for that after one year? Is that going to be a cost incurred that she has to take out of her budget at the airport? And what exactly is that? You put it in there, so what is that?
I didn't put it in there. It's in the standard Shell contract. And at one point, the FBO told me, and I don't remember what it is. Kathy, I know, so she can address it.
And she didn't know when I talked to her on the way here.
I'll make sure she finds out.
But then, just whatever the cost is going to be, and why one year, and whatever it's going to be, it's going to be an ongoing budget line, line item four. That's all I have in the contract.
Here's, if that's a flight tracking tool, just Google it. Looks like it's a flight tracking tool of some kind.
You know, he told me, because when we went through this, what the, the FBO really wanted us to switch to Shell if possible, because it's such a popular brand. You get so many marketing incentives. And one of his goals, and our goal, is to sell more fuel. And these were the incentives, and that was one of them. And I'm sure he told me what it was. I just don't... And I'm sure he told me what it was, I just don't remember, but I'll, we'll get that for the next.
I, I think the key issue is, after one year, what's it cost?
Yeah.
Who bears the cost?
Or, or do you even want to continue?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Looks like it's a flight tracking tool to improve FBO's performance. That's something they're going to want to have out there, you know, want to get it strong well. I don't know what the cost is, but it looks like it's something to do with that.
Thanks.
But we'll, we'll get it pinned out. We're being asked to approve a contract, and we should know what that is.
Okay, any other points of discussion? We're sending this on to the full board for approval in two weeks, and Kathy will be here, and we'll get answers to all of your questions, or any other commissioner questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. The Bluewater Riverwalk Acquisition Grant Purchase Agreement.
I'll move that we send this on to the full board.
For?
Any, any discussion? Commissioner Rushing.
Just one, is the entire cost of this coming from Park and Rec's budget? Out of our general fund?
My understanding is a hundred, what, a hundred and forty-five thousand? Half of that is being paid for by the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant, and the other half from the Park and Recreation Millage. And then the remaining, any remaining costs are donation from Atchison Ventures.
Okay, but nothing off our budget, yeah?
No.
My only question.
I think it's important to just follow up on what Howard said is, that Atchison Ventures had a higher appraisal than our appraisal, and they agreed to donate the difference versus try to haggle for more money. So just another example of what they do in the community.
I, I, I think the donations that they've made, not just to St. Clair County, but to the Community Foundation of St. Clair County, for that whole development, it is just, it is the most exciting project I've seen come along in a, in a long while.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit more about, I don't know, maybe in the ways and means portion of it, if we want to have that discussion, as far as just, really want to talk a little bit about it now. All the commissioners, we'll talk about it now. All the commissioners got the opportunity to go down there and get a tour of the project. I'm a firm believer that that is going to be the next area, that we as a county, city, community foundation, all of the above, we need to be really taking a look at as far as any other future investments to be made to help really develop that property there. I know the county has some participation currently, you know, via through the Community Foundation, think we have two, two hundred thousand or so in an initial waterfront purchase piece of it, those types of things. I think when you really touch it, feel it, get the explanation of what really is going on there, that is some really big stuff that they're doing down there. And I'm not saying we don't take a look at other projects that we want to do in other areas, but in my mind, the next, you know, million dollar something or whatever it is, we really need to be in those discussions with the individuals down there, Atchison Community Foundation, so on and so forth. So I think this board collectively, we need to, something, don't have to do it today, but maybe in the next little bit to say, you know, this is the area that we want, we want to be engaged in discussions, and we want to be in talks to. So when Bill Kaufman goes out and meets with whomever, is that the direction that the board is, you know, giving him to, to go? Is it a I on our list of priorities? Is it not on our list of priority, those types of things? So I don't know what thoughts other commissioners have, but maybe a quick little.
One, Commissioner Riley?
I'm sorry. Good, all right. One of the things that I have to agree with Howard, Jeff, the, the walk that day we took, I thought was very impressive. And number one, you know, we've been, over the years, building up along the water, we don't always get what I think we should have along the water, and this is certainly one of the things that really stands out as something. And it's kind of funny, because I talked to a couple people this week that have walked there beyond the point of the, I'll say the Atchison, where they have the, where they sell the fruits and vegetables, et cetera. And they've walked all the way down to the end, as we did. And the comments that I got back from a couple individuals that knew nothing about what I was thinking, made good comments about the walkway, how you could get down to the water, didn't realize you could step into the water, where they called that, I believe, was Pebble Beach. And that, plus the other one that come up, was if they ever thought about the kayaking you had launching someplace. And I said, "Well, that's been discussed, we're going to have that there too." So I think once the people get an opportunity to get down there and see what's being done within a year, you know, see what the, the final results, I think they're going to be thoroughly impressed with the work that's gone into it. I think it's, it's just a great opportunity to really make that property stand out. And it's for the people. I think that's what the whole.
Yeah, one thing I do want to comment, that, that whole mile long is now owned by, you know, different foundation has, but it's just got access to people, waterfront, you know, so on and so forth. So it's not, it's for, it's for the public use, for the public benefit, and to be able to acquire that. And I mean, I, I live in St. Clair, East China, as much as I love our boardwalk in St. Clair, you can't get in the water down there, bottom line. And it's, it's pretty cool that you have that ability to get in there and do all those things down there.
Any other comments from, or questions from commissioners regarding this purchase agreement?
A couple down here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Just two things, I'm going to echo everything, this thing, echo all the comments. It's really, really positive. And also that Tom Riley learned how to determine how much a weight of a rail.
Yeah. Dude, I have my backup sitting right there, too.
While we're in the discussion, Howard, I guess I'd like to get some input from the rest, if you don't mind, as far as, is this the direction? Do we want to talk about that now? Is it the direction that we should be, what, what's the commissioner's feeling? Should we be looking at other things there, at what level of participation, or?
Well, I, I think one of the, one of the things that, that's going to be happening, at least from Randy Myers, the Community Foundation Director, you know, hopefully, they're going to have the, the walkway in this fall, so in October, November, people should be able, they'll have the barricades down, people will be able to walk the distance and see how it's coming along. And as he said, this isn't, this isn't going to be the finished product, in that as we go along, there's going to be other additions to it. He talked about some service clubs adding to it. The young professionals, they want to get involved too and add some stuff. And I, I think, you know, as a county, we've got to be open to other, I think, opportunities, should they present themselves. I, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but I don't, I don't want to say this is the end, we're never going to have anything else to do with them, but if another opportunity comes up. Commissioner Gray, talk.
I, I think it's the perfect piece, where you're bringing a lot of different entities together and making a project for the entire community. I mean, you're looking at the Community Foundation, the county's involved in it, Parks and Recs is involved in it, the city will be involved in it in some form or other, the Rotary is involved in it, all kinds of pieces. Atchison's involved in it. There are all kinds of people coming together, and you'll probably find more people coming down there wanting to get involved in this thing. I mean, I think it's, it's going to be a big piece. And when that trail connects up and people find out that, as you were just saying, that the trail is not the walk, it's when you get off the trail that you take a look at what's down there. So I think it's, I think it's the perfect piece, and I think we need to keep our eye out and be ready to move if something else jumps up.
Commissioner Rushing.
Just gave me a thought what he just said. Would it be possible to kind of outline what he just did, all the communities and all the people that are working to get this together? Draft a nice letter, give it to Phil Pavlov, our state senator, and have it forwarded to the center, covering it, because he wants communities working together.
And, and I thought you were going to bring up about that old locomotive they want to put down there from Port Garin Museum.
Did I say I got a license to drive a locomotive?
Something about that.
Multiple times.
Duty calls.
First time I saw that today.
Okay, no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. The Stormwater Permit Coordinating Proposal Service Agreement.
Steve Demick, Environmental Health Director. Spicer Group was the unanimous selection of a committee consisting of myself, Greg Brown, Health Department Administrator, and Sherry Faust, environmental educator for Stormwater Support Services and Permit Coordination for the county. Completion of this process will save the county over fifty thousand dollars a year annually. You know, of the forty thousand dollar amount, over half of that will be offset by contributions from community partners. We are, continue to add partners. We are now up to eleven municipalities and six educational institutions that are partnering with the county.
Okay, any questions for Steve? Commissioner Rushing.
Is this going to be replacing Kristin DeJure?
Correct.
And I just got one, because I was involved with the Bell River watershed. Is that going to be taken over? Who's going to be overseeing that, and where's that?
The Health Department is still oversee it, the environmental health. I will oversee a lot of the financial aspects of that, and Sherry will oversee a lot of the educational and actual day-to-day operation of both programs. And she'll still be involved in the Stormwater program also, as far as the educational aspects of it.
We're going to have a, somebody appointed at the county to be our Stormwater coordinator. Aren't we required to do that by the federal?
It'll be Spicer Group will coordinate. It'll be the Health Department, most likely someone from the Health Department, probably myself will be.
Just a concern, I believe we have to have a specific designation.
Yeah, we, we submitted a permit application earlier in the year. We still haven't, there's a negotiation process that we have not begun on that.
Commissioner Gray, talk.
Steve, you had mentioned forty thousand dollars, about half of it would come out of your cost. Talk a little bit about where the other half would come from. You mentioned some other partners.
We are up to eleven municipalities that we partner with, and they can give us kind of a contribution and part of the Stormwater Support Services, we help them on their permit application. The educational institutions, which there's six of, they are actually nested under our permit, and they contribute annually to, to that, for those services.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, and we send it on to the full board.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Resolution 2013-2020, amending resolution 2013-2006, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Partnership Planning Application for Final Action.
I move that the resolution supporting the I-69 International Corridor, CEDS, CEDS Planning Grant Application, you agree?
Okay, Jeff isn't here to discuss that.
I can, you need a second?
We need a second. Any questions? Commissioner Rushing.
I have a few of my guests. Where's the EDA, the US EDA request? That isn't part of our package here. Where is their actual request that is requesting this?
I, I have not seen that. I'm sure that the planning department has seen that, which is what initiated this amendment, but I have not specifically seen.
This is for final action, I'm not sure why it has to be final action tonight, but.
Were they not in front of us before?
Dickens.
Yeah. He was, he was in front of us and made a presentation on this a couple months ago, possibly.
My, my understanding of this, from reading the packet, is that our previous resolution did not indicate, even though we went through all of this, and it's all presented to us by our metropolitan planning staff, as well as the EDA, and we talked about the soft and hard match money, it wasn't included in the resolution. And so what we're doing here is simply saying what we committed to before wasn't in the resolution, now we put it in the resolution. So I, I look at it as really a housekeeping matter that we've already dealt with.
It's, yes, this is getting very specific. This is how we intend to match it, rather than just saying, "We will provide a match." We were required by the EDA to tell them specifically, and that's what the revision does.
In the previous, when Dan Casey came and spoke to us before this, I know they had the dollar amounts, because, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like five thousand dollars roughly for the different municipalities, and I know we had approved it at that time, and.
Well, let's know. Well, Steve's got a question.
Steve?
Just I would note in Jeff Donaldson's cover letter, the last two sentences indicate in adopting the revised resolution, the board would not be supporting anything that has not already been agreed and supported through the previous resolution 1306, no actual changes to scope of work. Revised resolution simply specifies the county's match commitment as requested by the US EDA. So that's what I glean from this. Bill, is that pretty much what you take from that?
Yes, it is.
So it's a housekeeping matter?
Yes.
In support of previous resolution that was adopted by a majority of the board?
Correct.
Commissioner Rushing.
Currently, how many municipalities within our thirty-one in St. Clair County are part of the I-69, I-94 corridor? Five or six?
I, I, I don't know.
I'm thinking five, maybe six, if you include the county.
Yeah. But I think if we look at where the governor's going, we're going to find in, in the next few months, probably, there will be three other counties included.
But no, that's going to be something different.
It's part of his strategy. But be that as it may, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
No.
No.
Motion carried. The Septic Tank Appeals Board Appointment. Yes, Commissioner Gray, talk.
I would like to add Tom Kaufman's name to the Septic Tank Appeals Board. He's from Cotfield Township. He's the deputy supervisor there.
Tom?
Tom Kaufman, K-A-U-F-F-M-A-N.
But as a professional, correct?
Pardon me?
But he's as a professional.
As a professional, correct.
Any other discussion?
This, this is to be sent on to the full board. I would move that this be moved. Has it been wrongly moved?
The addition, there's been a motion to make an addition, and if, if we could, I would like to have it moved to the full board with the addition. Also move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray, talk. Any other discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried. We have the Smith Creek Activities Report.
Howard?
Yes.
If I could, just maybe as housekeeping, do we need a roll call vote on the resolution that was passed? If there's money involved.
The audience already found out.
The Smith Creek Landfill Report.
Receiving files, Smith Creek Landfill.
Okay. It's a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Chris, can I make a comment?
Yes.
On the landfill, please. I had an opportunity, I was asked to attend a meeting with Kimball Township Fire Department and Matt, and brought in a couple other individuals from the landfill area to go with the fire that they had out there. And what it involved was the, some more training, and I got to say, it was very well received by both sides, what went on that day as far as training. It was discussed on training that both sides, and they also want the fire departments that responded to be able to go out there, take a look. Matt was very open to his people getting more NIMs training. It was, it was, I felt really a, a good meeting. Plus, it came up about radio communications instead of hand signals when the fire department and their people are trying to work together. I was able to obtain one eight-hundred radio from Jeffrey Lins area, and that will be, and it's already in the hands of the fire department, I've delivered it to them, they're going to have it set up, that it'll be just, they won't have all the channels that some of the eight-hundreds have, but if they have a fire out there, one of the things they can do now is communicate better with the people. better with the people. They might have to buy a couple more 800s, but Matt realizes that, but he's happy to have one to start with. We also talked about foam, which would douse fires a lot faster out there than the water will, because water sometimes will splash and move around, foam will smother. And so it was very productive meeting. And the next one will be sometime, I would say late October, and they're going to start some training. And they're also, I think it'll be good because, and I mentioned it to yourself, Howard, and also to Jeff Bone, that the people that have been involved quite a bit out there will have an opportunity to sit in and find out what's going on out there. But I think very, very productive meeting for the Kimball Township Fire Department and Matt and his people from out there.
Well, the secret is communications.
It is, and it was very good, well-received on both sides.
Having that ability now.
Yeah, I actually talked to Jim Logstern too, as a follow-up with him. You'd want to have him, Jim's our landfill consultant. Jim's been through multiple fires and has had some insight too on how to handle it. So he'd be.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yeah, I believe Tom just brought it up, but for NIMs, I think we still need to get another elected official. You have to have an elected official at the county level to qualify for any federal funds. If that would have been a major disaster, you need someone at the county, the NIMs qualified to get any federal funds. So go and talk to Jeff Kaufman for it. I am NIMs qualified, but I think we need the chairperson. Doesn't take long to do it. Qualify for any national. If you go to the governor or the federal, hey, you have to be NIMs qualified to qualify the county for it.
We don't have to keep all that?
Can't be underwritten. You have to be an elected official. Every township has to have one.
Excellent. Well, you have a new job. Okay. Seeing no discussion regarding those items, moving on to environmental and public works matters. Any? Seeing none, well, other than what Commissioner Riley brought up, we'll move on to information only. Any comments on the 2012 Survey and Remuneration Program dispersment or the park financial Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to receive and file the information only.
So move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to receive and file packets regarding environmental and public works matters?
So move. Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Motion movement, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
This time I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
We have a revised agenda.
Motion to delete pending litigation from the executive session. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on. Do we have any updates? Seeing no updates, go to conceptual initiatives. Do we have any? We'll move on to old business. I see no old business, we'll go to new business. 7A, Workforce Development Board Appointment. I see we have one, an Ann Forster. Can I have a motion?
Aye, so move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Move on to the Board of Canvassers appointments. And I see we have a list from our county clerk.
The Board of Canvassers appointment at the next meeting, you actually have to cast ballots and choose one of the main party.
Have a motion to send this to the final board.
So move. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to eight. Any other Ways and Means matters? Seeing none. Move on to information only.
David, just want to get a couple of dates straight. I know Commissioner Graytop had called me on it and we had some moving dates. Our joint board and Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting is next Wednesday. Correct me if I'm wrong, 5:30 or 5:30. And then our next board meeting was on the 19th in Casco. Full board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. Do you have any other Ways and Means matters?
Well, next week is back up.
That's going to be on a Wednesday?
Not next week, two weeks, Wednesday, the 18th, September 18th, 5:30 PM.
Where's that at, Jeff?
The 18th. That is the board and the Metropolitan Planning Joint Meeting, 5:30. And that's going to be here?
The auditorium.
The auditorium.
And we have then, the day after that, we have our board meeting.
Full board meeting in Casco.
And the 26th, you have a budget workshop scheduled.
I don't think we got a whole lot going on on the 26th.
Let Bill let us know for sure by then at our code board meeting whether we're going to hold that meeting or not. All right, we'll move on to information only. Can I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So move. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
I would make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining agreement negotiations and thereafter adjourn the Ways and Means Committee.
Support a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe we have to have a roll call vote in the executive session.
They changed the law.
And it's all greater.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.